Sir Agency, if you'd stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Madam Clerk, if you could take a role, please.
Yes, Alvin Smith, Morcell Hay, Norvell, Peters, Raffanin.
And I believe we need to read the Please Take Notice.
Well, we are appearing in person, so it's being presented in a hybrid format, both at Town Hall and via Zoom. To speak during public comment portions of the agenda via Zoom, please join the meeting and use the raise hand feature when the mayor calls for public comment on the item you wish to address. Written public comments received after agenda publication are forwarded to the council members as soon as possible after receipt and are available for inspection at City Hall during normal business hours. All comments become a permanent part of the agenda packet on the day after the meeting or as soon thereafter as possible, except those written comments that are in an unrecognized file type or too large to be uploaded to the city's agenda software application. Public comments may be submitted to City Clerk June Lemus at J L E M O S at Fort Bragg dot com.
Thank you very much. Brings us to Agenda Review, where we have one item. I will be moving 8B to after 8D. Appreciate everybody's understanding there. And now we have, we're going to be moving 8B to after 8D. Bottom of the agenda. Mayor's Recognitions and Announcements. We have presentation of proclamation recognizing the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, May 1st through May 7th. So I will read the proclamation. Proclamation 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, May 1st through 7th, 2022. Whereas the office of professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest among servants. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to ever be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serve as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Bernie Norvell, Mayor of the City of Fort Bragg, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. And further extend appreciation to our own professional municipal clerk, Ms. June Lemus, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they present. I will present this to her own. Ms. June? Okay, I'd just like to add how much I appreciate you, Ms. June, for always keeping us in order and keeping us on time and on task. Appreciate your dedication very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to serve and to be on this dais with you fine people.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. We have one report out from closed session that I will announce here. We have directed legal and our city manager to negotiate with our top candidate from our interviews last week. Public comment on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, we have nobody in attendance. If you could check online, please.
Jacob Patterson, you may speak.
Hi, thank you, Jacob Patterson. I just wanted to say I also wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work June does. She is one of the most important positions at the city because she facilitates, along with Mateo, also, I think does a good job. Public participation and transparency matters that I take very seriously, and I think she does too. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
No one else.
Thank you. Okay, public comment on consent calendar items.
If you are attending via Zoom and wish to speak on consent calendar items, please use the raise hand feature now, and we'll call on you for three minutes. No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we have no closed session this evening. Staff comments. Mr. Spar, please.
I have two mayor tonight. Thank you very much. The first is on March 31st. We held a workshop about the revolving loan fund in this town hall building. We had about 15 participants, and as a result of that, we now have three prospective loans that we're working on with small businesses, and all three of those small businesses are looking to locate downtown in the central business district. So we're quite pleased by that. And if we do run out of funds, be returning to city council, asking your permission for me to solicit the local banks and savings and loans to make a donation of funds and create a revolving loan pool from the local banks to support our small businesses. Second item is to announce the Blue Economy. The Fort Bragg, visit Fort Bragg website has the Blue Economy press kit, event information, and registration up and running right now. So I encourage everybody to go online and register soon and register often. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then I believe Ms. O'Neill has an update about Wiggly Giggly.
I do. Thank you, Mayor Norvell. So I just wanted to announce some good news that last week we were notified that the State Farm Neighborhood Assistance Grant for $25,000 that the city's project made it into the top 200 finalists. So basically what this means is that we're in the final round. The top 100 projects with the highest votes will receive $25,000 each to help fund park renovation. The grant was made possible through work with Adventist Health. And tomorrow afternoon or early Wednesday morning, I will be pushing out a press release as well as a host of communications through the city's social media and contacting many, many other organizations as well, like the schools, et cetera. But basically, this is the community's opportunity to vote. Voting begins on April 27th, so that's Wednesday. And it is a really short vote turnaround with votes ending on May 6th. So in addition to our media push, we will also be distributing flyers throughout the central business district in the next couple of days. And so you'll see these bright red flyers with QR codes on them. Tell your family, tell your friends. It's Tony-wide votes. And so we really, really need everybody to vote in order to get us that $25,000. And then the only other item is that I will give a further update on the playground progress tomorrow at the Community Development Committee at 3:00 PM.
Thank you. And we have no other staff comments. Matters from council members. We'll go down the row here. Vice Mayor, do you have anything? Okay, Alvin Smith? No? Peters?
I just want to thank the council and staff for the process that we all went through to help select a new city manager. And we spent a lot of time, not minutes, but hours. And I think that we have a good candidate, but can't say anything until everything's finalized. But just to assure our community that I think we did due diligence. I want to thank everybody for their part, and I think we've got a good candidate. And I also want to echo what the caller said and all of us have said about June. I've worked with her a long time. I believe that she was in a different department back in 2014 when I was first elected. So I kind of watched her move up. And so congratulations on the award and the proclamation that we had. And keep up the good work. You do a tremendous job. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Raffanin?
I just want to tell June, thank you. You're a great asset to our city.
I agree. Thank you for that. Okay, brings us to consent calendar. Anyone like to pull anything off consent, or will entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, first by the Vice Mayor, second by a council member Peters. If you could take a role, please.
Morcell Hay?
Yes.
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Raffanin?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Norvell?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Anybody have anything? Anybody have anything? No, saying none. We have no public hearing tonight. Brings us to conduct the business, eight A. Receive and file local road safety plan report from T J K M and provide recommendations for select highway safety improvement program grant application. Do we know if our two guests arrived?
They sure have, and I'm just going to give a quick introduction. We have Divya and Ruda on the line, and they'll provide the presentation for you. They're also going to be available to answer any questions that you may have, but the one piece that I wanted to add to this is that after this evening's meetings, we'd love to hear feedback from the community and council, and if there are any modifications to the draft document, we would have T J K M make those modifications, and then what you'll see is the report pursuant to the regulations in order to make us eligible for grant funds. It has to be adopted by council, so this item will come back to you under consent at a later date. And with that, I open it up to Divya and Ruda.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, Sandra. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the presentation for the local road safety plan for Fort Bragg. My name is Divya Vandy, and I'm a transportation planner at Zara T J K M, and I also have with me Ms. Rutha Jariwala. Rutha, would you want to quickly go ahead and introduce yourself?
For council members, my name is Rutha Jariwala. I am the T J K M. I am the project manager on this project, and Divya would be kind of leading us through all the process that we went through through this project, and you know, where are we today, and what do we expect, what are the next steps from here? So thank you for your time. Divya, you could go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you, Sandra. So you know, preparing a local road safety plan facilitates the development of local agency partnerships and collaboration, resulting in a prioritized list of improvements and actions that can be taken by the city to enhance traffic safety for all modes of transportation. It also offers a proactive approach to addressing safety needs and demonstrates agencies' responsiveness to safety challenges. So quick, you know, quick overview of the purpose of this meeting, we want to present to the city the local road safety plan, seek council comments and feedback, and you know, at the end, seek council approval eventually. To quickly going over, you know, what is a local road safety plan? The overarching goals of a local road safety plan is to reduce fatalities and severe injuries, which is really clear by collisions on cities' roadways and intersection. It is to identify, analyze, and prioritize roadway and intersection safety improvements on the city roads. And lastly, it is a required document for every agency to be eligible for highly safety improvement program grant funding, you know, which is going to open up on the night of May this year. Lastly, a local road safety plan considers engineering and non-engineering strategies, focusing on the four E's of traffic safety, which is education, enforcement, engineering, and emergency medical services. So you know, quickly summarize the entire project for the city. It started with data collection. We collected collision data, we analyzed, we stored collision data, and
Excuse me, ma'am? I apologize for interrupting, but we're having a horrible time our end with your microphone. Is there an opportunity for you to use a different microphone?
I can quickly call in if that's helpful.
That might help, yeah. We're more than happy to give you the time that you need to try that.
Sure.
Yeah, I was trying to fix it over there, not the volume, but the actual sound. While she's getting ready, question for staff. She mentioned something about the H S I P deadline in May. Is that why we're, is this?
I can answer that question.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So there is a highly safety improvement program, which Caltrans actually comes up with calls for project in month of May, and then we as a city, we put together application for that, and that that kind of helps us to fund some of these countermeasures that would be outcome from this project. If our benefit cost ratio is high, and if it makes it through that process, then we would get, you know, funds for our projects for the implementation of some of these improvements that we have identified in this program.
Thank you.
I have been able to join the meeting as an attendee.
I'm sorry? Could you repeat that?
Divya, I can hear you. What is the phone number that you're in the attendees list, and I will promote you.
Oh, wonderful. It's eight five seven, it ends with two one three five.
So can you promote the phone number that ends in two one three five, please?
The issue is we cannot promote phone numbers, only attendees with the name. But we can allow that phone number to speak, which we
Okay, let's do that.
The host would like you to listen to your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
Star six is mute, unmute.
Divya, so that you don't echo yourself? Yeah, thank you.
Hello?
Yeah, that's much better.
Much better?
Yes, thank you very much. Please proceed.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Okay, going over where we were, considering the project status and milestone, you know, as you can see here, this is a quick summary. We started with data collection of, you know, collecting the historic collision database. We analyzed the historic collision data and identified a high-risk network and killing a list of high-risk intersections and low-risk segments. Then in June twenty twenty-one, we met with the stakeholders for the first time, and you know, presented to them these initial findings. Further on, we identified emphasis areas that the city needed to focus on, identified appropriate countermeasures, followed by safety projects, and then met with the stakeholders again to present to them some of the viable improvements that can really help the city secure funding. We estimated costs and conducted a benefit cost ratio analysis to identify projects for the city with a high and competitive benefits cost ratio. Lastly, all of the effort was combined into a report, and here we are presenting the report for the council review and feedback. You know, something to mention about the next steps, as you know, also the response to the question that came in, will entail us working with the city to develop its grant application, all for a project for which is expected to open on May ninth. So we'll be working with the city to prepare two it's a grant applications. And you know, as you all can see, something to note for the entirety of the project timeline, we had a project website with an interactive map input platform, where stakeholders as well as committee members alike could go in and share with us their traffic safety-related concerns. We will be covering some major findings from that input platform as well. So moving on and looking at the collision analysis, here's a brief overview. Collisions that have occurred in the five years between twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, a total of five hundred and forty-eight collisions had occurred, out of which eighty-six percent were property damage-only collisions, and the rest of them were injury collisions. As you can see, we had five fatal and severe injury collisions. As a result of the analysis, you know, this was the list of high injury intersections that was identified, which have been ranked according to their EPDO score. The intersection of Red Avenue and Main Street was found to be at the top of this list, followed by Oak Street and Main Street intersection. For the high injury segments and corridors, the corridor of Main Street is rank number one, running from the northern border of the city to the southern border of the, you know, of the city, city limits. And number two is the segment of Highway twenty, Fort Bragg Village Road, from Route one to South Harbor Drive. You know, as I mentioned about the outreach effort, the map input platform was open from March twenty twenty-one to September thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The city proactively shared the website, and at the end of this map input platform, we received a total of twenty-one public comments regarding traffic safety issues. The most common commented traffic safety issue was issue with pedestrian and school safety, with about fourteen comments. Main Street, Highway, and Highway one was the most commented on street with pedestrian safety issues, or a by-below street and Lincoln Street. Maple Street was also referred to as a street with most speeding issues, with about three comments about speeding issues. Followed by this, you know, an emphasis areas memo was produced and analyzed the most common attributes of collisions, with a specific emphasis on the attributes of fatal and severe injury collisions. Top emphasis areas, as you can see, were identified as intersection safety, owing to the high percentage of intersection collisions in the city. This was followed by pedestrian safety, improper turning collisions, and collisions along Route one. As a result of the stakeholder meeting, one, we also learned that alleyways are a part of right-of-way in the city of Fort Bragg, and we went ahead and analyzed alleyway collisions and alleyway collision, alleyways and safety on alleyways, which also added as an emphasis As I mentioned, you know, as a part of the local road safety plan, the goal is to identify strategies under the four E's of traffic safety, and the four E's are education, engineering, enforcement, and emergency medical services. So education really entails giving drivers information about making good choices, such as not texting while driving, avoiding alcohol or medications affecting levels of consciousness, wearing the seatbelt, and informing people about the rules of the road. Enforcement entails enforcement of traffic laws and invisible police presence that tends to deter motorists from unsafe driving behavior. Engineering addresses roadway intersection improvements to prevent crashes or reduce the rate of collisions when they occur. And lastly, emergency services provide rapid response and quality of care when collisions causing injury occur by stabilizing victims and transporting them to other facilities. So here are the engineering countermeasures that were identified for the city of Fort Bragg. Starting with countermeasures for signalized intersections, the first one is improvement of signal hardware. Second one is converting signal to mastom. Third is installation of raised pavement markers, which entails adding clear pavement markers that can guide motorists through complex intersections. We also have installed raised medians on approaches, where raised medians next to left-turn lanes at intersections offer a cost-effective means for reducing crashes and improving operations at high-volume intersections. We also have a pedestrian, pedestrian installation of pedestrian countdown signal, which contains a timer display and counts for the number of seconds left to finish crossing a street. And lastly, one of the countermeasures that we've recommended is modify signal phasing to implement L P I, which is a leading pedestrian interval, which gives pedestrians the opportunity to enter an intersection three to seven seconds before vehicles are given a green indication. Those are a few of the countermeasures that have been identified for signalized intersections. Now moving to unsignalized intersection improvements, one of the first countermeasures is installation of signals, which, you know, traffic signals have the potential to reduce the most severe-type crashes. Number two is installation or upgrading of larger or additional stop signs or other intersection warning or regulatory signs. You know, this is really to enhance the visibility of intersections, and thus the ability of approaching drivers to perceive an approaching intersection, which can really be enhanced by installing regulatory and warning signs. Installation of right turn lane. Then we also have upgraded intersection pavement markings, which is again to enhance the visibility of intersections and thus ability of approaching drivers to perceive them. We also have installation and upgrading of pedestrian crossing at uncontrolled intersections, which includes adding pedestrian crossings that includes enhancing safety features and has the opportunity to enhance pedestrian safety at, you know, at locations that are especially problematic. And lastly, for unsignalized intersections, we have installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which includes pedestrian aggravated flashing lights and additional signage that enhance visibility of marked crosswalks and helps alert motorists to pedestrian Moving on to the identified roadway segment improvements, we have upgrading signs with new frozen sheeting, and these could be regulatory or warning signs. We also have installation of dynamic flash variable speed warning signs, which aggressive crashes caused by motorists traveling even too fast. It is intended to get the driver's attention and give them a visual warning that they may be traveling over with a recommended speed. We also have installation of sidewalks and pathways, which provide people with space to travel within the public right-of-way that is separated from roadway course. We also have installation or upgrading of pedestrian crossing with enhanced safety features. These, you know, enhanced safety features can include curb extensions, medians, pedestrian crossing island beacons, lighting, combined with pedestrian markings, delineating a portion of the roadway that is designated for pedestrian crossing. And lastly, we have installation of raised pedestrian crossings, which really gives the opportunity to enhance pedestrian safety at locations that are especially problematic and unsafe for pedestrians, and the raised crossing also helps encourage motorists to reduce their speed and provide improved delineation for the portion of the roadway that is again designated for the pedestrians. So with that, you know, quickly looking at the non-engineering strategies that have been identified. For education, conducting public information and education campaign for intersection safety laws, unsafe speeds, distracted driving, improper turning, and driving under influence can be very helpful. Conducting bicycle and pedestrian safety campaigns and outreach to raise awareness of bicycle and pedestrian safety needs through various media outlets, social media, bike and walk medicine. The city can update a pamphlet for crosswalk safety and bicycle safety for every three to five years. Under enforcement, targeted enforcement at high-risk locations can really be helpful. The city can also increase the number of personnel who have completed advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement training. Lastly, for EMS strategies under emergency medical services, installation of emergency vehicle preemption systems, and increasing the number of EMS slash fire control personnel taking traffic incident management training can really help the city. So finally, getting into, you know, the identified viable safety projects. Project one really entails systemic improvements for signalized intersections, and the improvements that are included are improving signal timing, raised pavement markers, and striping, and addition of L P I, really to address pedestrian safety at signalized intersections. Project four is for pedestrian improvements at unsignalized intersections. This includes improvements like addition of warning and regulatory signs, enhancing pedestrian safety features, addition of rectangular rapid flashing beacons, et cetera. So that's project two. Project three, concerns with roadway segment improvements, that include upgrade, upgrading signs with road segment improvements that include upgrade, upgrading signs with frozen sheeting, addition of dynamics, speed warning signs and enhanced pedestrian safety features. Project four entails additional segment lighting and installation of crosswalk in locations that have intermittent network of sidewalks. And lastly, project five is, has been identified as a pedestrian set aside to upgrade pedestrian crossing with enhanced safety features. So looking at the next steps, uh, you know, post, post approval of the LRSP. The city can go ahead and implement countermeasures that have been identified under various E's strategies. Um, the city can continue to monitor these high risk locations, you know, based on the performance measures that have been identified and with continuous discussion with the stakeholders and the safety partners who can support us throughout this project. Further on, uh, you know, in a few years, the city can evaluate the number of collisions. If a successful number, reduction in the number of collisions is observed, the city can continue monitoring high risk locations and update this plan every two to five years. If no reduction in the number of collisions is observed, the city can evaluate countermeasures again and update the local road safety plan after every two to five years accordingly. So with that, I would like to close and open the floor for questions, feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from council have any questions before we open this up to the public? None? Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, if you wish to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom and we'll call on you for three minutes. Leslie Kashiwara, if you'd like to talk?
Yes, hello. This is Leslie Kashiwara and I really appreciate this presentation. I think it was very clear and I'm very excited about the possibilities that are being presented here. I do, uh, also, um, I think what I heard was that there are opportunities for continuing to collect information and make, um, recommendations based on what's actually happening. Uh, in particular, I'm concerned about the intersections around the proposed grocery outlet bargain market, which is the area of Franklin Street, North Harbor Drive and South Street. Because, um, with the advent of that project, there will be many, many more pedestrians on the road and it's already kind of an iffy intersection on Franklin and South Street. Um, the one that I'm very familiar with is I come up from the Fish and Wildlife Office and, uh, head out, uh, to Cypress Street because I don't like turning on the unsignaled, uh, intersections onto Highway one. So, um, I'm very excited about these analyses and, um, I really look forward to seeing some of these recommendations implemented. So thank you, uh, very much for that presentation.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have one more speaker. Jacob Patterson, go ahead.
Hey, it's Jacob Patterson. Um, I want to agree with what Leslie just said, but I'm also actually a little bit confused, um, as to what this, um, agenda item is exactly about, um, particularly because it seems to have a lot of overlap and I would like to maybe flesh out or have the council ask, um, staff and the consultants to flesh out how this connects to our other big projects like the Caltrans ADA project that should be coming back, I understand, being combined with, um, the MCOG funded city project for parts of Main Street. There seems to be a lot of overlap when I went through the presentation before the meeting and then followed, um, her presentation just now with what that project is doing and how these things might relate. Um, I'm a little bit confused because I don't think I actually participated in this online survey. Um, and I, you know me, I tend to participate in everything. And, um, there were a couple of areas that I think weren't identified that I would have probably highlighted. Um, my main intersection concern for safety is South Franklin and South Street, right next to where Leslie was talking about. Um, I also personally have a strong concern for Harrison and Laurel Street and over on Lincoln and Maple. Those three intersections were all identified by the city council as needing all way stop protections when you guys did, uh, I think a couple, at this point, it's almost been two years at least, I think, um, and nothing has happened with them. So, um, one, I just would like to know if any of those improvements are still planned and, um, what the connection is between this and our other projects. Because it seems like there's overlap and I don't want us to have different people working on the same things. But if this can help us get additional funding for all those things, that's great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
No more hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, back to council for discussion. Questions? Who'd like to go first? Can anyone from staff answer that last question?
I'm sorry?
Can anyone from staff answer that last? Is this an overlap? I mean?
I can certainly speak to that. So, so it is a bit of an overlap, but the important piece that I guess I, I could have led with is that the highway safety improvement program has changed the mechanism by which they allow agencies to submit applications for grant funds. And the main, the primary change is that cities and counties have to have a local road safety program that's approved by council and that's updated every two to five years in order for us to be eligible to compete for these certain, this certain pot of money. So this basically leads us to that conclusion, assuming that you, you approve the report. Um, the other important piece of this is that this study was grant funded through Caltrans in order to assist agencies in, in creating the document and keeping it up to date. So it was fully grant funded to bring us to this, um, point today. And like many traffic studies, we always want to build on those studies that we already have available to us. So kind of the initial scoping session between myself, um, and other members of staff and TJKM, I did provide them with, you know, large quantities of traffic studies, um, pretty much back as far as about two thousand and sixteen. Anything that I noted that had remained as a high priority within the city or things that had not been implemented that we had identified a need for, uh, we incorporated those into the study in order for us to be able to find funding to, to cover the cost of the implementation.
Does that answer your question? Okay, Vice Mayor, please.
So to go after the funding, do we need to be more specific in which mechanisms we're going to use for the problem intersections? Or can we just generally say, these are our problem intersections and these are the general tools we'll be using? Because I don't see, I, I don't see any specifics here. I guess I'm a little confused by that.
Um, Chantal, do you want me to take that? Yeah, so, um, there, there are two, uh, types of applications that we can put together. One is, um, location specific applic-, um, sorry, location specific application where you can identify exactly what kind of countermeasures you are going to implement at specific locations, um, and how much would it cost? So that's, that's location specific countermeasures. Um, countermeasures like what we discussed on the project one, LPI. Those are, uh, kind of more, um, proactive countermeasures that would be implemented on all the signalized intersections. So you, the, the next step would be, they would be looking into LPI analysis, which is called leading pedestrian interval analysis, uh, in which we will identify exactly which intersections would gain benefit out, out of having, um, LPI implemented and then implement only at those intersections that would gain benefit out of it. So there, there are two, what I was saying is there are two different type of applications that we can submit. One is location specific applications and one is overall's like citywide application. It could be LPI, it could be update, upgrading all your controllers. It could be looking into, uh, light and sign inventory for the entire city. So it, it really depends on, um, what has come up in your collision analysis and how do we want to put an application together? Makes sense?
It does. So I guess, I guess my follow-up question would then be, are we, are you looking for us to approve today? I mean, I, so you said there are two applications. Are we just approving going after the money, but not the specific projects or are we?
We, we are intending that you, uh, adopt the LRSP plan on the whole. Now, application is a separate, um, topic to that. Uh, the basic need for even going after the, the grant application is adoption of LRSP. And adoption of LRSP means that we have done the basic collision analysis and identified the emphasis areas and countermeasure, measures that would be helpful for us to, uh, kind of, you know, have all modes of transportation move around safe within the city.
Right, thank you. Right, sorry, I, I was looking at the, the deck and it was saying seek council approval. So I was just trying to, I appreciate that clarification. May I ask one more thing?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Um, my one other question for you is, um, you mentioned that updated studies are necessary every two to five years and I saw that this information was generated from between the years, uh, twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. So already it's three years old. Should we be at all concerned about that?
No, so those are two different things. Um, the, the collision analysis that Caltrans accepts as a part of, uh, this study is for five years. So you have to look into five years of collision analysis. So all the collisions that have occurred within the five years. Um, the, the, the two years of going back and revisiting the study, the reason behind that is that you are going to implement some countermeasures um, based on the grants that you get. Now, whether those countermeasures really work for your city or not, that no one knows, right? But once you look at the same study two years down the road, you would have enough data to say that these intersections were already treated with certain countermeasures. Did they work for the city or not? If they worked for the city, then you want to implement some, some of those countermeasures at other locations which have similar, uh, kind of collisions or not even collisions, but you know, someone would come and say that I think this intersection has similar characteristics. There is no collision occurred, but again, I do see very close, um, misses, like collision misses. So we can go ahead and implement the same countermeasures at other locations having same criterias. But unless we do not go back and revisit those locations where we have made changes and implemented countermeasures, we wouldn't know as for our city whether those countermeasures work for us or not and they have helped us to reduce collisions or not.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alvin Smith? No questions? Uh, Peters, please.
Yeah, um, I'm a little confused. The, the collision analysis, um, there used to be, when you dealt with Caltrans over a safety issue, whether it's accidents with vehicles or pedestrians, uh, if you wanted, this is on Main Street because Caltrans has the right of way on Main Street and they, everything has to go through them. So our Main Street intersections, um, oftentimes, for instance, right here, for the longest time, before there was a stoplight, we had a lot of collisions in this intersection. But when we went through Caltrans due to this five-year accident analysis, when they used to do the collision analysis, they said there were more collisions on Pine and Main Street and that if we wanted a traffic light, we could pay for one here, but they weren't going to pay for the one down there because our analysis didn't show enough accidents. But we knew there was a problem. Um, the reason I say this is I think we know there's a problem at Oak and Herald with the pedestrians that are going to school. It came to our attention through the community and through a rather serious accident that occurred there. But that was one accident. Maybe there's been two and there are probably other intersections within the last five years that are going to have more. And so when you try this, I'm just, how does this analysis work? We're going to give you analysis by what we see and what we sense, but it might not have the collision amount that another intersection has. If you see where I'm going with this, and so how do we, how do we, how do we emphasize without using, uh, um, an analysis based on the amount of collisions, but on the, what we feel is more dangerous?
And you are absolutely, absolutely right, you know, uh, and that, that's something that we as consultants have also spoken to Caltrans multiple number of times. So now what they, they are bringing this change slowly into this program. So now what they're telling us is that, okay, we do understand that our grant application, um, process is very, very focused on collision analysis. Um, so you start with that. But at the same time, like Divya mentioned, we did have a lot of stakeholder meetings as well as community outreach meetings. So we are trying, just like what you said, we are trying to take those comments and we are trying to incorporate that into our analysis. So we do have, um, recommendations or countermeasures, not only for reactive incidents, like you're saying, there are collisions that have happened and you have countermeasures for that. But listening to the stakeholders and community, we are trying to see if those, um, could merge with the comments and concerns we have received from the community to make it proactive approach. So it, it is very difficult. I, I know where you're coming from and, you know, we have kind of let this barrel so many times that yes, you, we talk about proactive approach, proactive approach, but they do not give us an opportunity to include those, um, locations or segments or intersections that community feels that something needs to be done. Uh, it, it really does not give us an opportunity to react proactively. Uh, so now what we have done, like LPI, we might have seen, like leading pedestrian interval, which is one of our projects, we might have seen that that particular countermeasure came up only for one or two intersections. But what we are proposing is that all the intersections get evaluated for that particular countermeasure. So it's not only those intersections where we see high number of collisions, but also those intersections where we do not have any collisions. Makes sense? Like, we are trying, uh, to kind of include proactive comments that we have received from the community and add that to the analysis.
Okay, well, thank you. I know we, we've had some problems in the past and struggled with the intersection of Redwood and Main, particularly people traveling west on Redwood and turning south on Main with pedestrians proceeding easterly on Redwood. Uh, and there were several incidents there and we tried to fix it and I don't know that we, it, it's any safer. Um, so I guess I understand the need for this, but I, it seems like it's been difficult in the past to get money from Caltrans for improvements on Main Street that we feel are necessary. The rest of town, you know, we can, we can not have to deal with that, but especially this, this corridor right here.
Uh, we, we have still not closed the project. So if you have any comments that we can still include it in our, uh, as a part of our report and club them with the countermeasures that we have, please, please still send us the comments and we'll see what we can do. So if you think that Redwood and Main has a problem, if you could just email it to Chantal and Chantal, if you can forward it to us, we'll try to see, you know, if anything could be done to include it.
Okay, and, and back, I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Also, we will be looking at Franklin and South, um, Harrison, Maple, some of those other, uh, intersections that, uh, you know, community just mentioned.
Yeah, I agree with the ones I saw, but that particular one was a problem before and I don't know that it still isn't, especially when we get a lot of tourists here in the summer crossing the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I think we had the same issue, the same issue at, uh, Oak and Main. We had a young gentleman that's actually been hit there twice in the last couple of years. So yeah, thank you for that. Councilmember Rafin?
Okay, I think my question was answered. Um, so the, the said locations in the presentation, you So the, the said locations in the presentation, you aren't the only streets that are going to be on there. You can add more?
We could add more, but we have to be very careful because again, you know, Caltrans process is very, very analysis oriented. So we have to make sure that our benefit cost ratio does not get impacted to a point where we are not in the game at all. You know, there, there are certain criterias that we need to meet. We have to keep our benefit cost ratio high for us to be in the run to get these grant funds. So we, we try to see if we can club them together and still get those funds for implementation. But again, you know, it, it, it's kind of a difficult process.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We have to be competitive and towards the end of the day.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from council? No? Okay. Well, we have no action here other than to accept the report. And Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe we need to take a vote. Is that correct?
You don't. You can do a voice vote. Do we accept the report? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Okay. It'll come back on the consent calendar for a regular vote.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay. And again, we're moving past eight B. Brings us to eight C. Receive report and consider adoption of city council resolution approving the revised 2022 citywide design guidelines update for commercial, industrial and multifamily buildings. Mr. Locke, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be presenting this item tonight. So a little background on the guidelines. We currently have adopted guidelines, but they are from 2004. And in 2019, planning commission considered updates to these guidelines as part of the mill site reuse plan. And, but these, these changes were never formalized. So as a result, an ad hoc team was formed consisting of two council members and two planning commissioners, council members being Tess Alvin Smith and Jessica Morse-Pohay. And then the, the planning commissioners being Nancy Rogers and Jay Andreas. And so this, this document is not an entire rework of the guidelines. It's essentially finalizing the work that was previously done and it's a culmination of that work. And so a little background, what are the design guidelines? They are a qualitative document independent of the general plan and the inland land use and development code. They are intended to provide recommendations and requirements for design for all new construction and remodels. And they're different from the zoning code and the general plan as they're intended to have some flexibility to them. They are not strict and rigid rules. And if somebody, at the end of the day, you can't meet all the guidelines set forth. So there has to be compromises and you, you have to try to meet the majority. But like I said, some flexibility. And so what changed based on this ad hoc team? The design, the design and format of the guidelines changed. In 2019, it was mainly based on tables. And then we changed it to be more of a list format. And we also removed the square footage distinction. In 2019, the guidelines were split between whether a building was less than 5,000 square feet and greater than 5,000 square feet. And in a city like Fort Bragg, most buildings are around 3,000 to 10,000 square feet. So this distinction didn't really make sense to the ad hoc team and thus removing them. And so all, all buildings are either mandatory preferred. There's no distinction. And then next we added guiding principles to the document. These are sort of the overarching goals similar to in a general plan. At the end of the day, it's the intent of what we're trying to reach by having all these guidelines. So the principles being strengthen community character, support connectivity, public enhancements and water and power sustainability. Along with these, along with these gateway, not gateways, along with these guiding principles, we have the gateways and corridors. This is a new addition as well. The gateways and corridors are intended to be broader scale direction to specific areas in the city. So when you see North Franklin Street, north of the central business district, it's mainly industrial, but you go one street over and it's mainly Victorian hotels, motels, inns. And so there's distinct characters on these streets. So the intent of these corridors is to capture these distinct characters and try to preserve them or enhance them. And then along with that, the gateways are sort of the entry points to our city, north of the Putting Creek Bridge and south of the Noyo Bridge. These are the transition points into the city where the countryside becomes more of a commercial and city-like atmosphere. And these guidelines were mainly pulled from the general plan. They're just mainly overarching goals, you know, enhanced landscaping, better signage and things along those lines to ensure the transition is smooth. Along with the changes to building design, we also made changes to sign design. The signs also had a square footage comparison. So there was less than 25 square feet and greater than 25 square feet. Again, that distinction the ad hoc team did not feel was necessary. And so we revise those standards similarly and all signs are just mandatory preferred. There's no size distinction, along with strengthening some of the guidelines related to certain types of signs. And then finally, we have the exceptional design exemption. So this, this is a process where, say you have a building such as the guest house, which would likely not be able to meet our zoning code or the intent of the design guidelines. These buildings go above and beyond architectural style. And the ad hoc team felt it was a good idea to allow these types of buildings in the city if they meet certain findings and criteria necessary for this exemption. And so a summary of action as to how we've gotten to city council today. We have already been to two planning commission meetings. One was a workshop and one was an actual public hearing where the public were able to comment, provide input. And then planning commission subsequently finalized and provided a recommendation to city council of approving this draft document on March 30th. And so as of today, we are recommending that you adopt a resolution approving the revised 2022 citywide design guidelines for commercial, industrial and multifamily buildings. And I'll open up to questions, comments, feedback on the document.
Wonderful. Thank you. Excellent report. Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Will we go to public?
Comment?
The comments will be after. Questions now on the report? None? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could open up AC to the public, please.
Thank you. If any members attending via Zoom would like to speak on this matter, please use the raise hand feature now and we'll call on you for three minutes. Jacob Patterson? Go ahead.
Hi, it's Jacob Patterson. I just mostly wanted to say that I'm impressed with the results of this. I think it is a very good work product. And I've seen the improvements at the different steps that are good. Like for example, in between the planning commission and here, some of the pictures were changed to much better ones and local examples, which I think is great. But anyway, I just wanted to say this is, I really like these new changed and in my opinion, simplified design guidelines. That will be a lot easier for applicants to use and also for staff to use as they get projects. I would, the only thing I would point out that might need a teensy bit of change before you guys adopt it is there's a couple of errors on the acknowledgements page. Sarah McCormick's title is wrong and the planning commission officers are different now. But I mean, I don't think those are critical. But anyway, it's really good work that I am impressed with. So you should adopt it. And thank you, Kevin, for all of your hard work on this. Bye.
Okay. Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Back to council for action or discussion. Who'd like to go first? Alvin Smith, please.
I just want to say that I was one of the lucky ones that got to work with Kevin on this and it was a pleasure working with you. I learned so much from not only you, but my fellow committee members in the process about signs, about why, what the rules are, and this is the way to go. This is, if you want to learn about the city, you join a committee like this. So I'm just, I'm just saying as a comment, but thank you so much for all your hard work. And what is that building in the exceptional designs? I get asked that all the time. The one below.
Oh, oh, are you talking about the picture?
Yeah. It's on Iceland or something.
You know, I don't know. I wanted to, I just picked something that was truly out of the ordinary. So no, sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? Any comments? Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, I just also wanted to thank Kevin for your hard work and your patience with the committee as well. You really, you really put a lot into keeping this train going forward. So thank you for your great work.
Okay. Anyone else? Any discussion or comments? What we have on the table here is to adopt resolution approving the revised 2022 citywide design guidelines update for commercial, industrial and multifamily buildings.
I'll go ahead and so move that we adopt city council resolution approving the revised 2022 citywide design guidelines update for commercial, industrial, multifamily buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, first by council member Peters. Second?
Second.
Second by council member Raffinan. Madam Clerk, if you could take a role, please.
Morsell Hay? Yes. Alvin Smith?
Yes, and it's the Lotus Temple in Delhi, India.
Raffinan?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Norville?
Yes. Okay. Brings us to eight D. Receive report and consider adoption of urgency ordinance number 981-2022, placing a 45-day moratorium on the approval of applications and permits for cannabis dispensaries in the inland zoning area. Mr. Spar?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I prepared a 45-day moratorium for your consideration or approval. We were considering using the existing ordinance and waiting for permits to come in and giving us a window. But we decided against that because it could confuse those who want to apply for a cannabis permit. So I went ahead and drafted a new moratorium that's before you today. It's a 45-day moratorium that will give us barely enough time to get through the adoption and approval of the ordinance. I realize that 45 days will take us out to June 8th. But with another 15 days, usually takes, we have 30 days to deem an application being complete. We usually do that in much less time, in 15 days or less. So if we add that in there, we'll be at June 23rd and that'll give us enough time to have the ordinance in place and to be able to move forward finally on cannabis.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spar?
At any time we can end the moratorium. Once we convene and vote to do so, it doesn't have to go out 45 days.
That's, that's correct. Councilmember Peters, at any day you can, any council meeting, you can eliminate the moratorium and you can eliminate me as well. Thank you.
I don't think that'll be necessary. You might leave on your own. We've tried to keep you here.
Progrative of council.
And then another question. Nice, first of all, nice try, but no. The, when do we expect to have this, the cannabis ordinance back to council? Is it first meeting in May?
It would be.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Vice Mayor, please.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. That would be May 23rd. And that's what would give me the date of June 8th. And then finally of June 23rd at the wrap-up.
Okay.
So May 23rd is the date we identified at our last meeting and set as a date to return to council.
Okay. Second meeting in May. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Can you expand a little bit on the alternative? If we, if we weren't to put this moratorium in place, what would the repercussions be?
Vice Mayor, possibly none. You could have, we have an existing application that has been on hold and they could request to reactivate that and continue that process. We could have another application or two applications come forward and request to be processed. And we could process those accordingly. But we believe the applicants would withhold and they would wait until there's a new ordinance because they wouldn't want to have to change or amend in the final approval process because they could get caught in that approval process.
So it could, is it fair to say that, that it could actually draw out the applicant's approval process?
Correct. It could draw out the applicant's approval process and we pride ourselves on trying to be efficient and as quick as possible in processing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
One other question is an urgency, well, sort of a point, I guess. Urgency ordinance is going to require all of us to vote for it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else before we go to public? Madam Clerk, if you could open up eight D to the public, please.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak on item eight D, please use the raise hand feature now and we'll call on you for three minutes. All right. Jacob Patterson? Go ahead.
Hi, it's Jacob again. This is actually kind of related to Jessica's question that she just asked. And it's my understanding, unless it's changed since when this got published last week, that we have two pending applications that would be impacted by this. Neither of which will be affected, in my opinion, by having a moratorium or not. Because under the current codes that we have that would apply, if we don't have one, it wouldn't be approved. One is too close to the youth center and the gym that you guys all said you thought was a youth center, which the planning commission would need to follow if they were evaluating it or staff would too. And the other one was already denied twice in the same location. So that precedent that we have under our current ordinance wouldn't allow it to go forward. So there's really nothing, in my opinion, that would go forward now. That, and that's the reason to have a moratorium is to stop an approval that might not get approved later. I agree with Dave that most applicants will probably wait and want their application processed under the new one, particularly because our current codes don't allow cultivation. And they, at least nursery cultivation, potentially will be allowed as an accessory use for a particular application within the central business district later. But I, I don't, I mean, I don't care one way or the other. I don't think it's important if you do this ordinance or not, which in my mind kind of undercuts the urgency of it. And there's just some lack of logic, in my opinion, by proceeding. But I mean, it doesn't really matter, in my opinion. I just wanted to bring that up because I think there's some inconsistency of why we're doing it. But, and then not to be spoilsport, but I've reviewed the draft ordinance, which is attached to the recirculated or negative declaration. And there's a very significant problem that might hold up the new one and that Marie talked about at the last meeting, which is general plan consistency and the need for a general plan amendment, only because, and this may have been error, I'm not sure, the accessory use list for central business district and other commercial districts includes wholesaling and distribution. I'm not talking about the onsite distribution issue, but offsite distribution. And that isn't something that's allowed in our commercial districts per our general plan and our code purposes. So I think if you guys end up keeping that part when it comes forward, there will be further delays. So in my opinion, I don't know that you really need this moratorium right now. But anyway, proceed. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think we will proceed. Madam Clerk?
No one else?
Okay. Thank you. Back to council, discussion or action? Anyone like to go first? Vice Mayor, please.
That was more of a no, thank you look. You know, I, I, the, the intent behind the original rework of our ordinance was to try to gain clarity and improve the process for applicants so that we would be predictable. And so, so that makes, that makes it so I definitely lean towards the staff recommendation, going with the staff recommendation and giving it the time to make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's. So yeah, I'm. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to, to go with the staff recommendation here.
Okay. Councilmember Peters?
Yeah, I agree. I think that, uh, yeah, I want to comment about the last comment that was made, but in terms of relative to this moratorium, uh, we didn't have anyone this time from the industry, as we did the last two times we had a moratorium, and I think that should tell us something, that they feel comfortable now that we're trying to do the right thing. So I think that's what we're trying to do, for everybody's sake. So I, I'm going to be one of the four or maybe five to vote for it.
Okay. Councilmember Alvin Smith?
I'm in agreement. We, I think, in my opinion, we rushed through this earlier on and got in trouble with disagreements about how it should be implemented, and here we are today. So I'm really glad to take a step back and, and do it right.
Okay. Councilmember Raffinan?
Yeah, we've been working on this in a while, and Mr. Spar said they're that close. So just need a little more time and for the final draft, so.
Okay. And I, I honestly, myself, I did expect to hear from the industry about, um, not doing a moratorium, which we have heard in the past. It may be a, a sight on their part, I hope not, but I would agree that the, uh, the silent majority here today is telling us something, and I would be inclined to vote for this as well.
If there's no further comment, I'm prepared to make a motion, but.
Please do, we can always have a discussion on the motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt an urgency ordinance number nine, or, let me make this a little bigger, 981-2822, placing a 45-day moratorium on the approval of applications and permits for cannabis dispensaries in the inland zoning area.
Okay.
A second then?
First by Councilmember Peters, second by Councilmember Alvin Smith. Uh, any discussion on the motion? None? Madam Clerk, if you could take role, please.
Morsell Hay? Yes. Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Raffinan?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Norville?
Yes.
It passes.
Okay. And that brings us back to 8B. Well, I will be recusing because I live across the street from the potential grocery outlet sign, site, and I will be handing you over to the more-than-capable Vice Mayor, and I appreciate the, uh, early recess here, and I will see you guys next time.
You did, huh? Okay, so that takes us to item 8B. Receive report and consider adoption of City Council Resolution approving professional services agreement with De novo Planning Group to prepare an environmental impact report for a proposed grocery outlet at 825-845 and 851 South Franklin Street, and authorizing city manager to execute contract amount not to exceed $56,013. Account number 119-0000-2668. And this will be Heather, I believe.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, I'm going to keep this really short. As you know, um, we will need to do an EIR on the recently received application for a grocery outlet, um, which is the same as the previous project. Um, at 825-845 and 851 South Franklin, includes a lot merger, a coastal development permit, and design review. Um, and the environmental document, we received three proposals. They were ranked by three different members of staff. And basically, the end result of that ranking was Helix did get more points than De novo, but the, they were basically the top two and similar in their rankings. We decided to go with De novo. There's a couple reasons, but the, um, the main one why I recommended it to, they are acting community development director and, um, and assistant engineering director, is that Helix is a new company that we are working with. We've already contracted them with a mitigated negative declaration or EIS for a different project, and since they're new, and while they write great proposals, and so far we have a working relationship with them, we haven't seen any of their work, and given that we've had other contractor issues with different contractors that we won't be using in the future, we wanted to try one out before we started putting a whole bunch of eggs in one basket. We, I, it, I will disclose that successful, um, proposal has done some work already for the, um, applicant. And, um, but we did let them know, you know, you, we have to contract the EIR. That's required by our code. Um, and so that's, um, why we're going through this process, but they do have, they are qualified, and, um, I know that if you do have any questions for them, um, I believe Mr. McMurtry is on the line. So, um, that's all I got for you.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions from council? Yeah, Alvin Smith?
I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, I'm, thank you for that, Heather. So, um, so I'm to understand that these weren't picked based on, um, their bid price?
Not, no.
Not at all?
It, there is a, there is a small percentage of the rankings that was based on the cost.
Okay, but, but we don't, we're not paying for it, so.
No, it's the applicant who pays for this.
Okay, and did they, that ranking for the bid price, um, go through the other, the company or just us?
That, that just goes through us.
Okay.
Um, for our staff, we select the contractor, and then I let the applicant know that this is the person who we've selected. This is their proposed cost, and are you happy with this selection?
Okay, and then, um, you said, uh, in the report that there were three applicants?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we, the council, I don't think had a chance to look at any of those three. I would have loved to see the differences between the proposals. But, uh, what was the price range? Can you tell us between the different ones?
Yes, so they, they did range, um, like I said, this one was significantly less, the reason being they've already done a lot of work that the applicant has paid for. That's why it's less. And so, but the other applicants were, um, I want to say in the 160, 180,000 range.
Right, which is probably about right. Okay, and, um, uh, let's see. You said something just tonight about, um, you've had conflicts with other companies. Any of those three have you had conflicts with?
No.
So there's no problems with any of them? Okay, um, that's all I have right now, thanks.
Any other questions?
We, I, I'm, well, I'm trying to find a letter we got from somebody here in the email that was objecting to this, that.
From Helix?
Can someone find, well, there was a letter from somebody objecting to the company themselves, and I've been trying to find it, and I can't. And I was going to ask some of the questions they had, but I'll, I'll keep working on that, so.
Was it the one where they were, uh, talking about the cost of, um, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, that they were questioning the numbers that were provided by De novo, yeah.
Right. Any response to those?
Well, like I said, the reason that the cost is significantly lower is because they've already done a bunch of the work that, the background work under, from the applicant. There was, they were, there was some confusion on the applicant's part. They, and I don't know if they're on the line, but basically, they thought they could do the EIR, and we said, no, you can't do the IR. We have to do the EIR, we have to go through our bid process. But the contractor that they had contracted with did submit a proposal. So we, we don't have, they, the qualifications were sufficient. References are fine. If you have a concern with doing it that way, I'm very happy to go with a different contractor, but we don't have anything in our code or any reason why we can't contract with them with the work they've already done. That, that would be why it is significantly less. But like I said, it's up to council to decide if they have concerns about using that contractor because they've already worked with the applicant.
No, I, I.
But I don't, I don't, I don't have concerns about the quality at, at this point. Now granted, if we start working with them and it comes to light that it's insufficient, then we'll have to determine whether or not there's an issue, but, um, based on their qualifications and their proposal, I don't, I don't have any concerns.
Okay, and I, and I think maybe the, the person that's representing them that's on the line can answer these concerns. Now, this wasn't necessarily meant for you, but the.
Okay, yeah.
The question is, the charge has been made, and I'm going to sort of condense it, that because you've selected it at such a low price, this company, and since they've done some work, all you're going to get is a glorified negative deck. That's what the charge basically was saying, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, in so many words, so if the applicant or the, the person on the line representing De novo could, could respond to that, uh, I'd appreciate it. Because I think that's some of the other questions some of the other people might have here as well.
And I think we can see you, Steve, but we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Oh, now we can.
Okay. You guys can hear me okay? Okay, so I'm Stephen McMurtry, I'm one of the principals of De novo Planning Group, and, um, I, I'd like to just preface it, providing you with a little bit of background on our company. Um, we've, um, we have offices in Northern California and Southern California. Uh, we work for over 100 municipalities throughout the state, and we've prepared hundreds, if not approaching 1,000, environmental impact reports. So we're very experienced when it comes to CEQA. Um, we're very experienced in providing, um, preparing environmental impact reports. I've specifically served as an expert witness, um, in, in trials related to CEQA. Uh, so we know what is involved in terms of preparing an environmental impact report. The scope that we provided is to prepare a, a environmental impact report to analyze the project. We recognize, um, it, it's a small site, acre and a half. There's been some studies that have already been done. The idea is not to prepare a glorified negative declaration. A negative declaration is a completely different process. It's a shortened review period. The process that we have proposed to do is to prepare a notice of preparation. It includes a 30-day public review period. During that period, we would hold a scoping meeting by which all citizens, any interested parties, regulators would have an opportunity to meet with us, to hear about the project, and to provide any input that they want relative to the scope of the environmental impact report. And so that would be a 30-day public review process. Um, we would also, after that, we would be preparing the environmental impact report based on the scope that we identify through that NOP process. And that document, once finalized, it would be, um, a collaborative effort with the city staff, the city attorney, anybody at the city that would be reviewing the document until we ultimately come to a public draft, uh, that we could release to the public. It would be released for a 45-day public review period. Um, and again, during that period, any, any citizens, um, regulators, anybody interested in the project would have the opportunity to provide us comment. Comment can be critique of the analysis, it can ask for additional mitigation measures. There's a variety of things that people can ask for, but there would be that 45-day opportunity. And then from there, we would move into a final EIR phase where we would have, an opportunity to provide a written, detailed written, uh, response and any kind of errata changes that need to be done to the text of the environmental impact report. And then ultimately, all of that would collectively embody the, the final environmental impact report that we would bring to Planning Commission and City Council. Uh, we'd be asking for, um, your certification of the environmental impact report prior to your consideration of any approvals that are being requested by the applicant. So a, as a contractor working for municipalities, um, our fiduciary responsibility is to the agency that we work for. Um, and in a lot of jurisdictions, um, we do work for developers, and some jurisdictions, the, the cities prefer that we work for a developer just so that they don't have to administer any of the invoices or anything like that. But even in those cases, we work for the lead agency, we work for the municipality under state law. Uh, ultimately, the, the environmental impact report represents the best judgment of the city staff, and ultimately is presented to city council for, for their ultimate decision. Uh, again, we're, we're extremely qualified. I've, I've prepared hundreds of environmental impact reports, and I, I know what the project's about, and, um, what you will get is a, a full EIR.
Thank you very much. That question wasn't necessarily from me, but from some of the comments I've received. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that comprehensive answer there. Um, I just want to jump over to our city manager here. You had a, a question or concern?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I had similar concerns to Councilwoman Alvin Smith and Councilmember, um, Andy Peters. And my concern was the price disparity between the contractors, and I did a little bit of research upon that. And what we're finding out is those contractors that are extremely busy have increased their prices considerably, and those that can deliver in a timely manner have time available and have a fairly market rate value to the work that they're doing. So unfortunately, we're running into compaction in the industry on housing elements, general plans, and environmental impact reports. Those that don't have the time or capacity are bidding very high. Those that do have the capacity are within reach of our market. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Thanks. So, can I ask, um, Mr. McMurtry? What was that? Okay. There was a comment from a competing law, uh, firm that said that your, um, your bid, uh, or your contract was going to be, um, allow you to do, um, a public scoping meeting using only 21 hours of staff time at a cost of 3,000-something dollars. And, and I have a lot of background in CEQA as well. And they said that these tasks, which I agree with, typically take dozens, if not hundreds, of labor hours to compete. So, um, how would you respond to that?
You know, again, I think Heather mentioned, um, so we were contracted to start, um, um, with an analysis and review of existing materials, applications, um, evaluating the site. So we have done some work, and, um, that work is reusable. Um, it doesn't need to be, uh, thrown away and, and sort of started over. So the proposal that we've submitted, the price, the budget for that, is basically a remainder of budget that we had for the overall project that we had scoped to previously prepare an environmental impact report for it. Um, so we're not, it's not sort of additive. Um, it's basically, uh, what's remaining in the budget that, that we originally had.
Well, thank you, but I don't recall any public scoping meetings. Am I missing something?
Yeah, there, there will be a public scoping meeting. It's a mandatory component of the notice of preparation process, so that it would generally be held in the last 20 days or so of the 30-day public review period. So that is part of our scope.
Okay. Councilmember Raffinan? Do you have any questions?
Um, no, I, no, I don't. It was already answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then let's go ahead to public comment.
If you'd like to speak on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature. We have one person with a hand up already. Mr. Robert Edgerton, please.
Good evening, city council members, uh, Vice, Vice Mayor. Uh, Robert Edgerton with Helix Environmental Planning. We are the firm that, I represent one of the firms that responded to the RFP. And we wrote a letter to the file. I, I understand that, uh, a council member was looking for it. I asked that that letter be read into the public record. I understand it's part of the record, but I wish for the other council members who perhaps have not had a chance to read the letter, to heard it, um, to hear it. Um, there was an inference earlier that, um, a, a firm, and I believe it's, I believe it's us, I'm not sure if anyone else wrote in, that a firm stated that, um, the selected, um, planning firm would be developing a glorified mitigated negative declaration.
No, that wasn't meant for you. That was meant for someone else's comment. I'm sorry, you didn't say that in the letter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. That was, that was confusing to me. If that's the case, then, um, it's, that's great. Uh, we did have a chance to review the De novo, uh, proposal, and as stated in. And as stated in the letter, the proposal is sound. There's nothing in it that we find suspect or incorrect. Like Mr. McMurtry, I am a 25-year CQ practitioner and planner in the state of California. The question that we have, and that has not been answered this evening, is how does the selected firm intend on developing a notice of preparation, an initial study, and an administrative draft EIR for 21 hours? And I suggest that the answer is that they can't. Not once in my 25 years of experience could anyone do something like that. That's a Herculean task for 21 hours, let alone 210, tenfold increase. So how is that happening? And if the firm is already under contract with the project applicant, as has been stated by Mr. McMurtry, is the work being prepared, the EIR? Because if it is, the city just acknowledged that it couldn't be prepared under direct contract with the applicant. Thank you very much for your time. I just wanted to ask those clarifying questions for my edification. Thank you.
Next is Leslie Kashiwara.
Yes, hello, good evening. This is Leslie Kashiwara. And I'm very pleased to be able to speak before you this evening. I did submit written comments, not only for tonight's meeting, but also for a meeting that you had in February, which I appended to the comments that I submitted this morning. When I read through the proposal, my concern was precisely the use of the pre-existing studies. I am one of the people that sued the city over their approval of the MND and the granting of the permit. So I will be looking at this very closely. That traffic study was inadequate. It's now dated. The biological surveys were a joke. I am a biologist. I'm familiar with the kinds of studies that need to be done. And yes, it's a small area and it looks like there's not much happening there, but there actually is a lot happening there. Because we've had significant rain recently, if you drive by, you'll see that the area that I'm concerned about, where there might be wetlands, is just overgrown with plants. And the study that was done previously was done when everything was dry and it looked like nothing was happening there. So that, I guess, would be my concern is that the low bid also means that there's nothing in the budget to do additional traffic study, additional biological review. In addition, because the Planning Commission put so many special conditions on, which to me was an indication of the deficiency of the MND, those do need to be adequately analyzed, especially because so many people came up during the hearings to talk about how they would be, they live in the area, they would be walking to the grocery store, the pedestrian traffic will be tremendously increased. So just as we heard from that previous report about problem areas, that intersection of Franklin and South Street is going to be big. There are also issues with the intersection of North Harbor Drive and Main Street. People, where it says you can only turn right, people will turn into the Arco Station, well, is it still Arco? I'm not sure, the gas station, and turn right from there. So there are just all kinds of problems with the intersections. And that traffic study did not really address those. So I just want to make sure that, I actually was very impressed with the way the proposal looked and read the qualifications of the people who would be preparing it, but it just doesn't seem like they're providing enough time. And I'm concerned about them using pre-existing studies. Thank you.
Right, do we have any other?
Jim Moose?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Hi, I'm the attorney for the applicant. You may remember that in late February, I had written you a letter asking that the city council vacate its approvals of the mitigated negative declaration and embark on the EIR process. I wanted to share with you the applicant's perspective on where you are right now with de novo. Back in August of last year, I was retained by the BEST Development Group, the applicants, to participate in the litigation over the mitigated negative declaration. And at that time, I began to work with the city attorney and his litigation team within his law firm. And it took a while for that trial court proceeding to wind down. There was a question of whether the petitioner's counsel had properly served the city. So the city ultimately decided to make a motion to have a case dismissed. And it turned out that that motion failed. But during that same time period, we at BEST came to have the understanding, although it turns out it was incorrect, that it would be permissible in the city's process for us to retain an environmental consultant to get a jumpstart on the EIR that we had decided we would want to do and would recommend that the city do if the motion was unsuccessful. So BEST ultimately went through a bit of a beauty contest and looked at qualified firms and ultimately chose de novo with the expectation that de novo would prepare an administrative draft EIR that we could ultimately submit to the city. And this is actually a very common practice around California. And the propriety of that has been litigated. Essentially, it's permissible, although it's not done everywhere, for an applicant to submit the equivalent of a full administrative draft EIR for consideration by a lead agency. The lead agency cannot publish such a document unless it reviews the document and makes whatever changes it thinks are necessary for the agency itself to vouch for it on its own and to be able to say to the world that the document reflects its own independent judgment. So we've had quite a bit of time since late last year to move down the tracks towards getting an administrative draft EIR prepared. And we also only recently learned, relatively recently, that there's an obligation for the EIR firm to actually be under contract.
Mr. Moose, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Your three-minute speaking time has passed. Can you wrap it up with the last sentence?
Yes. I hadn't heard that there was a three-minute limit, so I apologize. This is a long way of saying that the reason why de novo's bid is lower is that there is a substantial amount of work done already. They're very familiar with the project. We fully understand that if and when they come under contract with the city, that their relationship with BEST will be at an end and the city will be completely in control and in charge. But that's totally permissible under the law. So we do encourage you to use them. They're very reputable and they can do this more efficiently than anyone else.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else with their hands raised?
Yes. Mr. Patterson, go ahead. Jacob Patterson?
Hi, thank you, Jacob Patterson, again. A couple of things. One, I actually am really glad to have learned in the meeting today, one of the reasons why there was such a disparity in the cost. It allays some of the concerns I expressed in my comment. And I agree with the other speakers that de novo certainly seems qualified, as do the other firms. Actually, I really like their name, de novo, which means review everything again fresh and not rely on the prior stuff or have it limited in scope, which I actually think is a little bit ironic in this case, based on the proposals and some of the points that I raised and Leslie just raised earlier. Because it doesn't look like they're going to do everything, de novo. But in any case, I would encourage the council, whether something's permissible or not, I would actually encourage you guys to seriously consider Helix instead. I have a concern that when the applicant gets to select the experts, that they, and they've already done that in this case, even if we're technically going to be in charge, that it becomes a little bit too beholden to, they become advocacy documents sometimes or look like them, rather than truly objective studies that facilitate informed decision-making. And I definitely think their time budgets are way out of whack to what's going to happen. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, we have relatively inexperienced city staff that don't really know a lot about these things so far. And I'm not sure how much they're going to be able to rely on them to be the double check. Two, we have extra involved people like me who are likely to submit very detailed written public comments. I already plan on submitting, resubmitting the entire packet of public comments from the MND as an attachment to mine. And just dealing with the public comments alone because of that is going to involve a lot of hours because they're required to do written responses to them, which is not something you have to do for MNDs. Addressing each point raised in every written public comment. And like, just those areas of this budget are not realistic, in my opinion. They're not dealing with the situation where the public who might participate are not, I mean, many of them are actually qualified experts themselves, including Leslie. And I think that that will impact this. That being said, it doesn't really matter. I mean, the applicant's going to have to pay for this. We're not talking about public funds upfront. But there's no question that this contract prices, even with the cost that they've already incurred, is going to be too low. And I would just feel much more comfortable with the city going with a truly independent choice to provide community peace of mind that we're actually getting our document that is about being objective and not necessarily presenting things in a light more favorable to the project or the applicant than you might get from somebody they selected. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Patterson, that's three minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comment tonight?
No, Madam Mayor, that's it.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Who'd like to start? Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Thank you. So the applicant has said that they, on page 12, that they would reuse the biological study. And the applicant has said that on page 14, they would reuse the traffic study. And those were the two complaints that were the two objecting people that filed an appeal to turn down the mitigated negative death approval. Those were the exact things that were not acceptable. And I, as a council member, agreed with them. I have a lot of experience with these things and I thought they were really not good studies. The actual staff here did some studies and they're not qualified biologists either. I was also appalled at the whole mitigated negative deck was amended and amended and amended by the Planning Commission and by the staff here without public, you know, it's great to have the environmental impact report process because we involve the public. There's all kinds of rules about that. But these rules aren't implemented in approval of a negative deck. We can just change it. It's nice that the public comes in and says things, but there's no requirement to respond. So I'm really happy that this is going to happen. I have no problem with de novo or Helix or any of the others. I wish I could have seen the plans that were submitted, but I understand that's not my job. But I really think that we need an objective company that isn't going to reuse studies. It's okay to refer to studies, but I don't think they should reuse the studies. They should start over again. We need a fresh start on this. And again, I'm very excited that the public will get to have a lot more involvement in that.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you.
I just want to point out that Mr. McMurtry is actually a biologist, a qualified biologist. So we have talked at length about his review of the site. So I wouldn't assume that just the fact that the existing biology is a deal breaker there.
Okay. No matter which company we select, there are people that are going to object to the EIR. I said it before and I'll say it again tonight. It's going to happen. Some of the very same people you heard from tonight will object to an EIR that is prepared. De novo said that they were experienced in EIRs, hundreds, if not 1,000, prepared, experts in CQ. They're going to take 30 days of input from the public written. They're going to have a public scoping session. I really think that when we're talking about public input, let's not forget the many, many people that lined up right here in support of a grocery outlet. We seem to forget them when we get to this part of the discussion, and I'm not going to. This community totally supports a grocery outlet and I think in some ways, we should do everything we can to make it possible, including getting going on this EIR. So let's get going on it. I'm 100% supportive of this, de novo. Even prepare to make a motion if we get there.
I have a question for, I'm not sure who it would be for, perhaps Mr. Spar or Heather. At this stage, can we, I guess, can we give direction to really take a hard look at those studies and make sure that we, I mean, I guess...
So here's what I would say is, I have never claimed to be an expert in CQ and I would not do so. I am learning a lot about CQ, but I will say I have dipped my toes into the world's deepest ocean. And what we have been doing and what we will probably do with this, because we do not have a planning director, is we will contract with another environmental consultant to review their document. So basically a peer review, because we don't have that capacity and nobody in our staff is claiming to. So it is also at the cost of the applicant, but that is likely what will happen if we continue with whoever we continue with, if we need to have that review done, if we have any concerns or questions about the efficacy of any documents.
So let me, I guess, rephrase my question in that if we approve this contract tonight, is there anything that says, I mean, if the scope that they provided shows reuse of documents that we're concerned about, does there have to, can we approve this contract with, I mean, does there need to be an amendment? Or how do we ensure we're approving the contract, but we're concerned about the scope, essentially is what I'm hearing?
That's an excellent question, Vice Mayor. How I've addressed this in the past is how I'll address it tonight. I would be upset with the consultant reusing data and materials. The word reuse is inappropriate. What they will do is use those reports and those materials, reevaluate those uses and materials, and add, subtract, or enhance those materials. As a consultant myself, we rely on all of the documents of the city to review when we do our analysis and many other cities that I work with. And I rely quite a bit on existing EIRs, sometimes old traffic reports. And I contact Caltrans and I have Caltrans update those traffic reports or the information in the report, specific to say an intersection or a project area. So I don't like the term of reusing, but I know what they're inferring to is we have available materials. We shall take advantage of those available materials and add to them.
So would you say that we could, by approving this, by approving this contract tonight, we're not agreeing to forego said improvements or updates?
That's correct.
Yeah, and actually, staff is usually who requests the applicant provide studies. So like, for example, the initial studies that were done on both biological and the traffic, those were provided by the applicant. They were separate from the contract that was done for the EIR, or sorry, the MND. They were separate from the contract that was done for the EIR, or, sorry, the MND that was previously done. So the city contracted the MND, the applicant provided those studies. So we would look at that and determine if we need additional stuff. And again, the applicant has to pay for all of this. So it's, it's their, it's on their dime.
Thank you. Well, I, I personally have to say that, that I'm inclined to go ahead and proceed with De novo. I, I agree that if we're trying new contractors, it's best not to put all our eggs in one basket. It sounds like Helix is very strong. It sounds like De novo is very strong, and if they each execute different projects and we're happy with both, then we have more tools in our, in our belt going forward. So also, taking that into account, as well as the fact that De novo has already begun looking at this project and has, has been working with the applicant, I'm inclined to approve this one. Raffanen, Councilmember Raffanen, did you want to?
Yes. So I agree with Councilmember Peters about delaying the project even more, and the American Planning Association had great things to say about De novo. So, and them updating the current plans or the negative deck they did before, their current information, that's not going to delay the project anymore. Like, correct? Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, we, I, we need to move forward for Braggis counting on grocery outlet. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, see how it flies. Make him discuss the motion if you want. I'm going to make a motion, though. I'll make a motion, we adopt a city council resolution improving professional services agreement with De novo Planning Group to prepare an environmental impact report for a proposed grocery outlet at 825, 845, and 851 South Franklin Street, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract not to, not to exceed an amount of $56,013 from account number 119-0000-2668.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And discussion on the motion? Yes, Councilmember Alvin Smith.
I just want to express that I'm still very troubled. I'm not troubled with the company. I'm troubled with the scope of work as expressed here. I, I'm mindful that what you were saying, that the Vice Mayor was saying, that maybe is there something else we could write into the contract or whatever, and I think that would require more money. And so I'm troubled by, if we wanted them to start over, basically from fresh, without using prior reports prepared by who knows who, then that would probably cost more money. And so I'm, I don't know how to go with this. I really, I'm afraid that, I'd like to hear from the applicant himself, or themselves, how this is, how they're, they're going to be unique and create, you know, fresh studies, maybe as our city manager has just said, maybe they're not going to reuse them, maybe they're just going to incorporate them as part of the, the background. I'd like to hear from the applicant himself before I vote.
Is Mr. McMurtry still on? Is that appropriate with a motion on the table?
Yes. Steve McMurtry is here. Can you all hear me?
He is, he's from De novo, right? Not the applicant.
Is it the applicant's attorney?
De novo.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I'm not the applicant. I was the proposal, proposer by which you're considering the contract, but I did want to just provide a little bit of a clarification on two points. I, I think probably the choice of words of we would reuse certain studies was probably a poor choice of words there. It, it's very common to receive biological study, cultural studies, a variety of studies, where an applicant has those performed before they ever buy the property, and that information is valuable information. I'm a biologist. I have actually evaluated the site already, but as a biologist, what I do is I take all literature that's available. It could be past studies, Department of Fish and Wildlife has records. I gather all of those records and start to do a desktop review before I ever go out to the site, to try to understand the types of habitat and what other people have seen out there. And then you go out and you do your own evaluation, and you, you gather your own facts on the site. So I have done that. What I don't ever do is discount somebody else's study. Somebody else's study has some facts that are relevant. I might disagree with them, I might agree with them, and I present all of that within an environmental impact report. But we, we are not going to be reusing, in the sense of the words I think that, that I presented in the proposal. We would be using that information, just the information there, but ultimately having our own independent judgment and conclusions provided in the environmental impact report. So that, that's relative to some of the comments on biology. The other comment was relative to transportation, and it sounds like there was some disagreement with some transportation analysis done. An important fact that I, I wanted to bring up is that the world of transportation has changed since that previous environmental or traffic analysis was prepared. SB 743 was passed, and in SEQA now, we have to evaluate a project based on vehicle miles traveled as opposed to level of service. And so the previous analysis was really heavily focused on level of service analysis. Since then, Mendocino County has developed a transportation demand model, and there's been some new methodology that needs to be applied for this particular project. And so the applicant has retained another traffic engineer to start analyzing the project to the current state law requirements under SB 743. And so it's a reputable transportation engineer. That work isn't done. My understanding, it's underway, but that would also be an update to some of the existing transportation analysis that's already been done. And so again, similar to what we do for biology, we gather all of the relevant information, past studies, current studies, and then we have our own evaluation and ultimately prepare an environmental impact report that considers all documents that are available. And so, again, I just want to apologize for the use of, of the word reuse of these technical studies. I don't think in the literal sense that's what we're, we're doing, but we are using the available information from those reports.
Thank you very much for your clarification. Did that, did that...
That helps a lot. And, and can I just ask, Heather, if the criticism of 21 hours isn't nearly enough that came from the competing firm? Well, I just want, let me ask you a question first.
Sorry, when I look at the proposal, what I'm seeing, sorry, when I'm looking at the proposal, I see a subtotal of 313 hours. So I don't know what the...
The scoping meetings, but anyway. So if, if it turns out to run way over knowing this town, and the amount of, like, amazing participation we get when people are upset about things, if it ends up running way over, is that just something where we just keep adding to the, the contract, or what?
If there, there, there may be a contract amendment if there is a, a need for it. Again, it's, it's the burden of the applicant to pay for that as well. So that's on the applicant.
Okay. Well, we have a, did you, okay. We have a motion on the table. Can we go ahead and take it to a vote?
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Raffanen?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Or Sol Hey?
Yes.
All right. That was the last item of the evening. We will go ahead and adjourn at 8:01. Thank you.